Good evening. And thank you for being with us tonight for the Tiburon Town Council Candidate Forum, brought to you by the ARC. And I'm Ann Laser of the League of Women Voters, and I will be the moderator. With me are League members Nancy Weber as timekeeper, there you are, and another Nancy Bell as the question sorter. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or impose candidates or political parties. And in addition to promoting voter education, the League participates in advocacy for issues and may take positions that arise on ballot measures. I'm going to be reading some legal language that has been added to our opening that I've never read before, but that we must read now. In order to assure impartiality and neutrality, League team members have no connection with the candidates. It is also our policy that team members not live in the jurisdiction the candidates represent. I would like to briefly explain the roles of the timekeeper and the question sorter. To assure everyone stays within the allotted time, our timekeeper will hold up easy-to-read cards, there they are, fully in the candidate's view, signaling their remaining time, for example, 30 seconds. When the time is up, she will hold up a stop sign, at which point the candidate should complete their sentence, no matter how long. Please note that the question sorter does not censure the questions, but rather she screens the questions to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. If you do not recognize your question being asked, it might have been combined with other questions on the same topic. Please note that CMC, the Community Media Center of Marin, is recording tonight's forum. A gavel-to-gavel production will be rebroadcast on CMC's Channel 30, as well as on the League's website at www.marinlvv.org. Audience release notices are posted around the room advising that your presence as a member of the audience during the filming constitutes your permission for the League of Women Voters of Marin County to use your likeness on the air in any form and as often as they deem appropriate and desirable for promotional or broadcast purposes. Tonight's candidates are Daniel Amir, Kathleen DeFever, and Jack Ryan. Now again, before we get started, a quick review of ground rules. If you haven't done so already, please take a minute to silence your cellphones and any other noise-making devices. Because we are a strictly nonpartisan organization and follow Federal Election Commission rules for candidate forums, no campaign material, including buttons, signs, brochures, and t-shirts, is permitted inside the forum room in order to maintain neutrality. Each candidate has been invited to make a two-minute opening statement, and after that, the candidates will each have a minute and a half to answer each question. To be fair, I will continue to rotate the order in which they respond to the questions. For the opening statements, we will begin with Daniel Amir and go down the row in the order in which they are seated.
Thank you. So I'm excited with the opportunity here to run for town council. My wife and I moved to Tiburon a little more than 11 years ago. During this time, we have raised our three girls who are currently enrolled in the Reed and Tam High School school districts. Soon after we moved the town, I decided to get involved in community service. My biggest asset that I bring to town council is that I have experience in all three areas of the town: town government, neighborhood, and the community at large. In town government, I've been involved in two commissions for the past seven years. I've been on the Heritage and Arts Commission for five years, in which I promoted the arts in town, and currently for the past two and a half years on the Planning Commission, where we have pushed topics as approving the Michael Mina and Caprice restaurants and dealing with zoning and open space issues. I've been the chair of both commissions, and I'm currently the chair of the Planning Commission. In the neighborhood, I'm a believer that town council are representatives of the people in town. Therefore, understanding the neighborhood is critical. I have been a member of the Belveron East Association for seven years and acted as president for five years from 2014 to 2019. Finally, in community at large, as members of the community, we're all part of the town. I've been very involved in the community, from coaching my girls' soccer teams over the years at the Tiburon Peninsula Soccer Club, to supporting the library and volunteering at the Reed Foundation. If elected, I plan to push issues that include revitalization of downtown, emergency preparedness, and preserving the open space. In addition, my current profession as a high-tech finance professional gives me the tools to successfully maintain a budget discipline while on town council. To close, I believe I have a record of getting things done in the community, and my experience blends well to be an effective town council member that can work well with others while leading with initiatives. I'm looking forward to answering your questions this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next is Kathleen DeFever.
Hello, I am Kathleen DeFever. I've lived in Tiburon about nine years. I'm a plaintiff's insurance attorney, so I sue insurance companies on behalf of persons who've been denied their proper benefits, whether it's disabilities, or fires, or floods. I founded the Opera Night at Servino's. I hope you've all been there, and if you haven't, you should definitely come out. It's a lot of fun. I'm in support of the arts. I absolutely love the opera. I support the library as well. I'm a huge hoarder, maybe, of books. I absolutely love books. And I support the open space. That's why I'm here, really. I think a lot of you are here for the same reasons. The open space that we have in Tiburon cannot be beat. It's one of the best that you'll find in the world, in my opinion. It's such a beautiful, gorgeous town. Emergency preparedness is also something I'm very concerned about. We don't have a lot of space for ingress and egress. We have one major road, and the other ones, as you know, you've probably tried driving it, it's a little bit too curvy to be a good emergency escape. And through my experience with litigation for fire claims, I'm extremely concerned about fire danger. The climate has been shifting. Things are drier than they used to be. We have a lot of exposed power lines. We need to cut back the trees, and we need to pay attention to these power lines ASAP. I think it's an emergency. I'm really happy to be serving the town. I've been on the Planning Commission for two years. I am the vice chair of the Planning Commission. I really enjoy the work. I love giving back to the community. That's something that was instilled in me even as a young girl, that it's what you do in my family. You get to a point where you're financially stable enough that you can give back to your community as much as you can, and I really enjoy it.
Thank you. Jack Ryan.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the ARC and the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. Local government matters. My name is Jack Ryan. My wife Sarah, two daughters, and I have called Tiburon home since 2010, and in those 10 years, we've been actively engaged in the community. You may not know, but Sarah served on the original Yellow Bus Challenge Committee in 2013, and later recommended me for its program manager. So for two years, I worked with the JPA, RUSD, Marin Transit, and town staff to deliver bus service to the community and reduce traffic. At the same time, Sarah and I were part of a team of four who successfully rallied our neighbors to vote to underground our utilities. Since then, I've helped two other undergrounding districts successfully proceed with their districts as well. We continue to be involved in a variety of ways. Sarah's on the board of the Marin County Pension Fund, and I'm the president of the Belvedere Tennis Club. On top of that, I coach youth sports, and I'm the parent coordinator for the Bel Air Math Club at the elementary school. I'm incredibly fortunate that I was able to retire a few years ago to spend more time with my family and community. As for my background, I graduated from MIT with a degree in aeronautical engineering. I was recruited into finance and ended my career as an executive at Wells Fargo. And I believe my capital markets expertise would be an excellent complement to the existing council. The last personal detail that I'll share is that I'm the youngest of six kids, and I think this is a huge reason why I'm successful implementing community initiatives, especially at the board level. I know how to work together as a group, and I also appreciate when a well-timed tantrum can be most effective. As a council member, I focus on three key priorities: revitalizing downtown, enhancing disaster preparedness, and preserving open space. I'd be happy to discuss these in more depth in the Q&amp;A portion. And in closing, I reiterate that I have demonstrated success delivering community benefit on projects which have wide support but were, for various reasons, difficult to implement. And if you vote for me in March, you can do so with every confidence that you'll get the same perseverance in your council member. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some questions that have been prepared ahead of time, but when you have thought of questions and written them down, raise your hand, and somebody will come and collect it and bring them up to me. The first question deals with the budget, and we'll start with Kathleen. What are your budget priorities? What does the town need to allocate more money to and less to? This is several questions. Do you support the Tiburon Town Council's decision last year to contribute so much to the library expansion at the expense of the town's own capital improvements?
Okay, well, budget priorities would absolutely be the emergency preparedness. We need to do something about the exposed power lines that we have, and the trees are right up against these power lines. It's very dangerous, and I'm aware of the science behind that and why it's very dangerous, and what happens when a community actually has a large fire, because I've been involved in that advocacy. I think that would be the number-one priority in my mind. What was the second part?
It is, here, you can look at it.
Yes, I think we need to allocate more money to that. Less money to, I really am not certain what we could allocate less money to. I think the town council is doing a very good job. We have one of the best balanced budgets in California. We've actually, the town of Tiburon has been cited as one of the most financially healthy towns in the entire state. I would have to look at the budget with great detail to analyze that and figure out what we could allocate less to. Do I support the town council's decision last year to contribute so much to the library expansion? Yes, I do, because our library is not just an educational center, it's also a community center. And I think that's the future of libraries. I heard from my little cousin the other day that they closed a library in a town near where she lives, and that made me very sad and upset. And I think we need to shift what the libraries are offering to keep them viable.
Okay. Jack?
So it's a very busy question, but thank you. So first of all, the operating budget is managed very well, and I think that we're in a great position. We've achieved surpluses many, many years in the recent past. I think I would like to see the capital prioritization list be a little bit better organized. I've been to the retreat that the town council members have hosted each of the, or three of the last four years, and I don't really see them delivering the capital projects that the queue sort of has in mind for us. You know, and the town has a lot of money, right? With the surpluses that I mentioned, we have a considerable cash surplus, basically, sitting in funds, and I'm happy to see that deployed for things like the library. I think that's a great use of taxpayer money, be it the town, or, you know, however you want to account for that, that was a fantastic thing to do. Things like McKegney, anything that promotes community is just great resources of capital project money. And as to what we need to watch out for, I do agree that with climate change and sea level rise, we have to take a long-term view of looking at how we'll need to protect the town. I know the Belvedere is working on protecting some of their infrastructure with a huge bond issue that's quite a big percentage of their budget, and I think that we're lucky that we probably don't have the same vulnerabilities, but nonetheless, we need to plan for those going forward.
All right. Daniel?
Thank you. So I echo my fellow candidates regarding the library expansion. Full disclosure, my wife is also on the library board, so I hope I definitely support that. I do think that the library is an amazing institution in town. I do echo the fact that it is much more than the library, and it also supports a very broad part of the community. It supports kids, senior citizens, adults. My oldest daughter, you know, goes there a fair amount as well, and she's a teen, so I definitely see it supporting across the board. I do think that in terms of the budget priorities, I think that one of the decisions that was made, which was to support kind of the visitor's center as part of the budget by town council, I think that was a good move as well. I think that was funds that are well-used to help support the downtown activity. So that was a recent also event that the town council went through. I echo as well the emergency preparedness. I think that is a priority that further funds could be allocated to that in the next few years, especially that we're seeing more and more issues around fires, utilities, and et cetera. So I'll sum it with that, that I do think that the town council is doing a very good job in terms of managing the budget as well.
Thank you. Jack, you will be the first to answer this question. Tiburon is about to undertake the first update to the Tiburon General Plan in more than a decade. Are there any major general plan policies you think should be changed? And another question, would you limit home sizes even more?
So I'm going to answer in reverse order. I would not limit home sizes even more. I think the regulations are fairly adequate there. But with respect to the general plan, the existing general plan is really thorough, and it allows for a lot of flexibility. The two things that I do see, looking forward, that we'll do, we will need to plan for, and frankly, the plan sort of accommodates it already, is more housing development, whether it's mandated by the state or not. I think it would be a good thing, particularly downtown. And then, secondly, for the disaster preparedness and long-term planning against sea level The need for housing can be accomplished within the existing plan. There are several buildings downtown that have a fairly flexible footprint within the general plan, and I think as long as we preserve that and keep our minds open in terms of the flexibility that those provide, I think we'll be really well-positioned.
The next one is Daniel on that question.
Yeah, absolutely. So the general plan is, you know, there's a five-year new general plan that is being, starting to be written right now, actually, as part of the Planning Commission work. I do think that there's a number of priorities that we can push here. One of the issues is around mixed use in downtown, and I'm sure there'll probably be a question around that. I do think that there's, we do need to be a little more flexible with having, working with developers to provide kind of mixed use that will have both retail and apartments or condos in a way that will also increase a bit the housing stock, but also will revitalize downtown as well. And I think that is something that is a good, is a good policy to work through. I as well would echo Jack's comment on limiting home sizes. I would not necessarily limit that. I don't really see that as a major problem in town. There might be some isolated incidents. The third thing in the general plan, which I think we continue need to address, is around traffic and how to deal with traffic going forward, whether it's around working on the public transportation part, but that is something I think that needs to be addressed as well.
Okay. Kathleen?
I echo a lot of the thoughts of my fellow candidates. To begin with, I also agree with having some mixed housing. I think that's a good idea. I think we could use a little more diversity in town and some more activity, because we all know it's very, very empty sometimes, and it's a little bit depressing to see our beautiful town be empty and the storefronts are empty. And I think we need to bring in more, more activity, more people, more ideas, of course, with retaining the beauty and the safety of our neighborhoods. And the other thing I would put in the, in the general plan would be the emergency preparedness. We need to be proactive about emergencies and not reactive in a way that we've seen of other communities who've been absolutely devastated. I think we can do better than that.
This is a question about traffic, and the one to answer first will be Daniel. The Yellow Bus program launched by Tiburon Town Council member Jim Fraser and Belvedere City Council member Bob McCask has really reduced school traffic. How will you get construction-related traffic down? Carpooling doesn't work for obvious reasons. Subcontractors need their equipment, et cetera.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the end?
How will you get construction-related traffic down? Carpooling doesn't work for obvious reasons. Subcontractors need their equipment and material trucks with them.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, yeah, absolutely. So in terms of the, you know, the Yellow Bus program, you know, I do support, you know, the Yellow Bus program. I think that one of the issues to deal with with the Yellow Bus program is that the double A measure is coming to an end in the next couple of years, and there'll be a need to find financing sources for it, and whether the town will continue to subsidize it or not, I think that's something that, you know, the next town council will need to deal with, given that the enrollment has been probably not as high as anticipated. With regards to how to reduce, you know, the contractors, I mean, there's different ways of doing it. There is, one of the thoughts is maybe to limit possibly when they can come into town or have kind of a surcharge to some extent. I think that's been explored in the past. The other ways of doing it was that they park next to the Reed School in that new parking lot, and that has kind of helped a bit reduce some of the traffic. There is no magic solution to this, but I do think that we need to continue to explore ways to reduce traffic. And one of the other ways that was not in the question is possibly work with maybe the Reed School District with regards to possibly changing maybe the bell schedule. That could possibly help as well.
Okay. Kathleen?
The Yellow Bus program has been very successful, in my opinion. I've noticed the differences in traffic. I'm very happy about that, and I think that it would be too much to eliminate it. I think we need to continue to make slight alterations to make it better. And I guess that I can answer the construction traffic question in the same way that I would answer the Yellow Bus program. So I think the issue is, in Tiburon, we have the hills. The hills are a problem. So if we, if we could get more kids to ride their bikes, that would be wonderful, the kids who live on the flat spaces. However, they can't get back, probably, at least on a lot of the hills, back up the hills after school. So I think maybe if we had smaller shuttles that went up the hill and were a little more flexible in their scheduling than possibly the Yellow Bus, because there has to be reasons people aren't all using the Yellow Bus. Maybe they can bike part of the way and then shuttle up. And it's the same thing with the construction question. We have, near our house, a very large construction project going on for a couple of years now, and what they do is they have a, in a police shuttle, and even the subcontractors use it. They get in the shuttle at the bottom of the hill near the police station, and they all go up in one shuttle, and it's because we would have a parking issue where we are. But I think that if the shuttle was further out, out further on the peninsula, that would solve some of the traffic problem coming in. I think it's plausible.
Okay. Jack?
Thanks. So if I was a real politician, I would have a better way of phrasing this, but I apologize to the person who asked the question, specifically to this question. I don't see any practical, cost-effective way to reduce specifically construction traffic. I definitely agree that the Yellow Bus Challenge helps traffic, and I think, I think really the issue is, let's reduce traffic, not specifically construction traffic. One of the ideas that I would put forward would be, especially to the extent that we're going to have new businesses coming into downtown, restaurants in particular, that have a high base of employees, that we provide workforce shuttles from the freeway to downtown, and we could make that cohort of the traffic more efficient, because right now, if each one has to drive down to Run Bullard, again, they're not construction workers, but to the extent that the goal is to mitigate traffic overall, that's a good one. With respect to the Yellow Bus Challenge, I think it's operating great. I would continue the subsidy. I don't think that there is really any way to optimize that, and we've really, we looked extensively at trying to optimize the district bell times, and it's just within the constraints of the program and the school district, there's not a lot of flexibility there, unfortunately. Also, I could try to cause a recession, because that would help with construction, but I don't think anybody wants that.
Okay. Another question about downtown business, and we'll start with Kathleen. Some downtown service businesses, like I wear, don't promote casual walking tourism, while some galleries and clothes stores are rarely even open. Would you consider further restrictions on downtown business types? Would you consider mandatory minimum business hours that aren't just by appointment?
I'm not in favor of restricting business in any way. I think that they understand their business better than we do, and I wouldn't want to restrict their hours. I think it's been, given our particular circumstances, I think it's been a good thing that we have restricted the type of businesses that could go in. I know specifically we have rejected some of the real estate offices that would like to take up some of the central downtown space, because, as the question infers, that hurts the foot traffic. And there's a lot of discussion about whether we should be an art center, should we be a tourist center. I really think with the addition, we approved on the Planning Commission the Michael Mina restaurant, as well as the project in the old Caprice. I really think that maybe we could possibly tend toward a restaurant, maybe a gourmet, a gourmet attraction, and then it wouldn't be a problem to have those support businesses, like the optometrist and the real estate agency, as long as we have large, the large businesses who bring in the traffic to begin with, because it's a cyclical problem. If you can't bring people in, they're not going to notice the support businesses. So I don't really think it's a problem with the balance. I think it's a problem with getting the traffic, getting that trajectory moving, getting some people in, and noticing that we can keep it moving, bring in more, more businesses.
Okay. Jack?
Yeah, thanks. So I'd be disinclined to place further restrictions on the type of businesses. I mean, we have so many empty storefronts right now that I think that we have a lot of runway in terms of just allowing any business for a while, but more importantly, I think that we have some developers in town now, landlords, who are really forward-thinking and really planning on, and have optimistic plans for revitalizing downtown. It's not just us who want a better downtown. I think it's the landlords, in particular, AC Ventures. And I, you know, they, I believe they're working with a consultant, McDermott or McDevitt, who is an expert in the mix of retail stores. And again, we have so many empty storefronts that we can, you know, if we have somebody targeting specific stores to bring in to revitalize downtown, we have a lot of open space to accommodate that, and so I don't think it's prudent to restrict and penalize landlords at this point by restricting the type of business that we have. And as for mandatory hours, the only thing I'll add, and it is a possible thing to say, and some people will cringe, but the town could consider providing an incentive to some businesses to stay open more. I know that Sam's loses a lot of money in the winter. If we could subsidize their loss to some modest extent, such that they could stay open longer, it would provide a more vibrant downtown. But obviously, there's numbers to put in spreadsheets that we can all have fun playing with to figure that one out.
Daniel?
Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, I think the downtown issue has obviously been, been around for a while. I mean, I was originally on part of the farmer's market thought process by former mayor Tullini when I was in the Heritage and Arts Commission. I was a liaison to that, and that's something that we tried, worked for a few years, and then it didn't work. There wasn't enough, you know, traffic. And in the Planning Commission now, we've dealt with the, you know, Mina and Caprice restaurants approval, and I think all those are steps in the right direction to really try to revitalize downtown. I do think that what we need to really do is work with the developers, and I echo the fact that there is developers like AC Ventures who are very interested in developing downtown, and we need to work with them. And this is whether we help support it, whether we work on what, what type of needs are in order to fill the retail to fill the retail space. And some thoughts is even, look, we don't want to encourage developers who just have an empty storefront for six months, because they just don't want to rent it, or the market rate is not right. That's not good for the town either. So I would explore even a possibility that the town should maybe consider, in a way, penalizing empty storefronts if they go on too long. In terms of the mandatory minimum hours, I do, I do think that that is something that the town council should consider, especially on Main Street, where there's a lot of business that could impact, you know, places like Sam's and other restaurants.
Okay. We have some questions on open space. And Jack, you will answer first. Everyone says they want to preserve open space, but the town has trouble maintaining the open space habitat it has. The rare plant species that grow on them are threatened because of rapid spread of broom and other fast-growing, non-native plant species. Would you favor allocating more money at budget time to habitat maintenance and restoration on town-owned open space preserves? And if so, how much?
That's a great question. I'd better say no, so they don't have to put a number on it, because that is the toughest part. So, you know, certainly to the extent that it's a fire danger issue, we have to do that. I think that's a no-brainer. But otherwise, with respect to just preserving it, I mean, I think that frankly, it's fairly well-open, the open space is fairly well-maintained that we do have. I think, I appreciate the beauty of the things that are left to themselves, but, you know, the places that I do run on the trails, I think everything is really well-maintained. I can't speak for the threatened species themselves. But even when I go running on Ring Mountain, like you can find a mariposa lily on that month that they're bloomed. And I don't see a lot of money needed to support that. I think we're in a pretty good space with that. No pun intended, I guess.
Okay. The next second was just Jack. The next is Daniel.
Yeah, absolutely. So when we were in, when I was president of the Belveron East Neighbors Association, we actually dealt with the Trestle Glen Hill project, which is still going on now, 10 years later practically. And one of the issues that we were dealing with was actually, the developer wanted to develop all the hill. Initially, there was a plan for almost a dozen homes, then it was five homes along the hill. And eventually, we worked with the, I led the efforts in the neighborhood to work with the developer and the town to get to, down to three homes, to try to save the, you know, save the environment as much as possible, but also blend it with the Belveron East community, and preserving the right that a developer has that owns land to develop his land. But one of the things that was proposed was also, he wanted a big grapevines along all the mountain, palm trees, and we were pushing for, you know, preservation of local plants and local habitat. That was something that I pushed forward. It had success eventually on the design review board, that they adopted that. But I think that it makes common sense to continue to support that, especially in whatever land that the town of Tiburon owns, to preserve, to preserve that.
All right. Kathleen?
We have a wonderful constituency that supports the open space and does a lot of, in the field, no pun intended, in the field work to maintain it. And I recently attended the Earth Day brainstorming meeting that we had. The town has a lot of really exciting plans about Earth Day activities. I recommend everyone check that out. It's going to be a lot of fun. And I was wildly impressed by all of the persons from different backgrounds, expertise in different types of nature even, expertise in the flowers, expertise in the birds, expertise on everything. And they're all very motivated to educate, to maintain, and to teach children the enjoyment as well, so they will appreciate the environment more as they grow older. And I just, I think that we don't need to allocate more money to it, because I think we have a great community fabric that just absolutely is excited about it. I think we just need to have more of these conversations and bring more of these people together. I think the people are there, and we just need to move forward and have, make some more exciting plans about the environment, just like the Earth Day plans.
Okay. Another open space question. There has been discussion on requiring land next to McKegney Green for town use. Where do you stand on creating a community pool, or sports courts, or snack bar, or the use? And Daniel, we start with you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I would support the town, you know, purchasing the land that currently is basically the pools that is, you know, that used to support watering McKegney Green. Today, there's largely, you know, ducks there. So I think that, you know, the town owns all the land around it, and I do think that that would be a fantastic idea. I'm more supportive to explore, to actually have it as a park. I do think that making it possibly as a community center, you know, could create issues with neighborhoods and Stewart Drive. In addition, there are, you know, three to four community centers in a way, while they're private clubs, all in short distance. There's the TPC, there's the Belvedere Tiburon Club, there's Harbor Point, and there's also Strawberry. So the question is really, is there a necessity of having a community center there necessarily? But I think it's a wonderful opportunity that now that McKegney Green has been, you know, remodeled so beautifully, to take the opportunity and expand and develop, you know, and have a park open space there.
Thank you. Kathleen?
I would also support purchase of that piece of property, so that the town can use it for extra, you know, more park space. Of course, more park space is always a wonderful thing. I don't have any specific plans for the space. I wouldn't want to uproot all of the wildlife that lives there. I think we should have a study, and we should check, you know, how is the space currently serving nature? What would be the best, most fitting use for it within the park system that we already Yeah, well, that's also an issue, because that property does not belong to the town. So we have hurdles to get over to acquire it in the first place, and that's something that we have been working on and looking at, to see how that can be possible.
Jack?
Sure. So, you know, it's a little bit of my pet peeve in terms of like, it's already public land, right? I mean, it's part of the sewer district, so I, like, the machinations of trying to purchase it drive me crazy, but that's the reality. I do think it should be put to good public use. It's clearly not right now. And if affecting a transfer to the town is the way to do it, that totally makes sense with me. With respect to a community center, I just think that would be a tough location, and frankly, the footprint isn't really big enough to accommodate something that would really make a difference. And if it were, it would, like Daniel said, would drive the neighbors bonkers, and it just, it would be a pyrrhic victory, right? If, no matter which way it went, in terms of you would either alienate all of the neighbors in Stewart, because you'd place a burden for parking on them, or you'd make everybody else mad who wanted the community center. You know, and next door, a couple of weeks ago, there was something, why don't we have a dog run that's fenced in down by there? Like, you got the fence, you got the birds they can chase. It seems like you're halfway there. But bottom line is, yes, I would love to see it repurposed. I would like to see the town be able to negotiate intelligently to get it, and I think that would be the best use for it in the end, but not the community center.
Well, one more on open space, a question that I've asked in every election. Where do you stand on Martha? And that, Kathleen, you're first.
I fully support the litigation that's ongoing for the Martha property, with the caveat that I would prefer that there had been some kind of negotiation and agreement reached between the two parties. But, you know, I'm a lawyer, so I understand that sometimes that's not possible, and you have to get a neutral party, such as a judge or a jury, to look at it with outside perspective. I mainly support the litigation, because I don't think Tiburon can handle that many more homes. We already have a problem with traffic and ingress and egress, and we need to focus on cleaning up the branches around the power lines, fire prevention, emergency preparedness. We should not be burdening the town with more homes. I just think it's not a, not a good idea.
Okay. Jack?
So I have stood in a lot of places on Martha. I've gone running up there quite a bit and gotten chased off, and now I'm fenced off. It's a beautiful spot. Obviously, it's outside of the town limits, so I think that we, as Tiburon residents and as town council, we need to be strategic about what we, knowing what we can and can't do to affect an outcome there. I also agree that two things are positive right now. One is the litigation, to make sure that the town is protected if it does go to development. Excuse me. And I think that that's a reasonable thing for the town to do. And I think that the other positive is that they're getting an appraisal, right? I think that the Reeds have been unrealistic about how much money they expect to get out of it, and now we'll have some definitive numbers put on it. I think the real end game is to try to get, once the litigation is cleared, is to get private money to buy it and keep it preserved forever as open space. The thing I can do to help is that, on a smaller scale, I have made compelling cases to neighbors, friends, coworkers, and things, to try to raise money. Before, I was on the advisory board of a nonprofit that promoted literacy among disadvantaged youth. And when I tried to rally my neighbors to get our utilities undergrounded, I was knocking on doors, collecting $3,000 from people. So I'm familiar with knocking on doors to help people promote community, even though that may not be their first instinct.
And Daniel?
Yeah, absolutely. So I do think that, look, the Martha's property has obviously been controversial for many years. I mean, the land itself is county land, but I do think that the town's approach here has been very pragmatic. I think the litigation or being part of the lawsuit is, has been very good. Of course, the town has a limited ability to impact the outcome of this. And I really hope that this is the direction where it's going right now, is really towards some sort of settlement. The developers or the owner of the land, of course, has a right, in a way that he owns the land, and we need to respect that. But the, to Jack's point, the appraisal is a positive direction, because I think there was unrealistic expectations about what the land is worth. And I would absolutely hope that, you know, in all of our lifetime, we will see the Martha's property being an open space that we can all benefit from, and it will be purchased by, you know, by a nonprofit organization or a private organization to really preserve the open space. And I do hope that that's the direction where it's going now. And, you know, I think the town needs to continue to, you know, to go in the direction where it's been, where it's been so far.
All right. Another topic is emergency preparedness. We start with Jack. What more can the town council do in the way of emergency preparedness that the Tiburon Fire Department and Southern Marin Fire Department are not already doing? What would you push for?
Can I have an extra 30 or 40 minutes to talk about this?
Well, you know, if you, if you ever want to go around or second round, you tell me, and I'll let you do it.
The reason why I'm eager to discuss this is because, as I've mentioned a couple of times, I led a utility undergrounding initiative in my neighborhood, and it was a monumental undertaking. And the town had policies and procedures that basically mandated that they were, the town was uninvolved in helping us, and put all the burden on the citizens. There are towns that underground utilities prolifically, and as we now know, that utility infrastructure in a storm is a source of ignition, and it blocks emergency vehicles from accessing the disasters, right? Because they can't cross the downed power lines. So utility undergrounding, having a policy as a town, would be great. There are two types of utility undergroundings. One is a neighborhood-generated one, which is a 20B. There's also a municipal process called 20A. And the town went through that process with some wires near the elementary school, and then in the end, the cost was so high, they declined to go forward. I think it was more of a sticker shock than that the cost was unreasonable on a per-foot basis. But the bottom line is, the town needs policies and procedures to help people underground, because that will be the single biggest thing to preventing disaster, or exacerbating disaster if and when they happen. The Fire District can take care of the fuel. We need to take care of the ignition sources and egress.
Okay. Jack? I mean, Daniel?
Yes, thank you. So we've, about a year ago, you know, in Belveron East, we've been approached by a number of neighbors with regards to the park that is between Belveron East and Belveron West, which is actually, if you've ever been there, it's actually a really interesting park. It's partly, it's part, it has grass, but the back of it actually goes all the way to where the tunnel of the train used to be in Tiburon. So there's actually the tunnel opening. It's now, of course, full of rock, but that's kind of where it was. The point is that that whole area was basically a fire hazard. And we, we had to deal with the, with the town in a policy of an issue that we couldn't really clean it ourselves, because this was town land, and then there was an insurance issue, but then this was in the backyards of people who live on Mercury. So there is things that we can improve in terms of town policy that the Fire Department currently is not, you know, is not responsible for. Other things around emergency preparedness is, is things around, for instance, block liaisons, or working more closely with the home associations in town. That is something that, to my knowledge, is not being done that much right now. But I think it's a great way to get the community involved, and really to push forward things that, around emergency preparedness, which did not exist or was not an issue maybe 10, 15 years ago.
Kathleen?
I, I agree with Daniel that we need more community involvement in emergency preparedness. I can speak for our homeowners association. It hasn't met in years, and I am trying to make it lively again, so that we're having these discussions, because we need some plans, so that maybe there's a buddy system, for example. You can check on a neighbor that you know is not as mobile, and make sure that there's, they have a way out. And maybe you have set up carpool schedules, who's carpooling in which car, and then the traffic won't be quite so bad during the emergency egress. I'm really concerned, as I've said a couple of times, about the power lines, because they are exposed, they are not insulated. And if you just drive up and down Tiburon Boulevard, you see that the trees are up against these exposed power lines. If it gets dry enough, and we all know it gets windy here, we're going to have fires. We've been lucky thus far, that we tend to get some fog from, from the ocean, and that keeps the vegetation moist enough that we haven't had these fires. But I think that the town needs to take some responsibility for trimming the tree branches that are up against the existing above-ground wires. And I think we need to make a plan to, undergrounding is great, but undergrounding is very expensive, and it's a very slow process. I think we need to come up with alternative solutions, such as changing the wire out to be insulated, and we need to have these conversations, because what we're doing now is not working.
Okay. Another topic, and we're asking at every debate we do, is about affordable housing. Daniel, we'll start with you. How would you create more affordable housing without destroying Tiburon's neighborhood character? Should Tiburon have a policy, and this may be another question, of not approving any more conversions of multifamily buildings to single-family homes, to preserve the multifamily housing if it already has? If you want to separate those questions.
Okay, I'll try to answer that in a minute and a half. So I do support, you know, affordable housing. We are limited here in the town of Tiburon, that the town itself does not own much land anymore. So it's all about working with private owners and seeing how it's going to work financially for private owners. There is no, there's no doubt in my mind that anybody who's going to buy the Bank of America, you know, that's for sale now, is, will want to put housing there. I mean, it has a lot, it has a building. No one walks into that bank anymore, really. It's a beautiful building, they'll tear it down, and they'll want to put housing there. I, I do think that there is a way to provide kind of this mixed-use concept that I talked about before, in providing some... about before, in providing some retail and some, you know, market-rate mix with affordable housing in the downtown area. I think that will help both achieving the social aspect of, of, of supporting affordable housing, it will support, you know, more traffic in downtown, in terms of foot traffic, and help businesses. And I also think that it'll achieve the goal of the town of Tiburon and what we want to do for our citizens as well.
Kathleen?
I support affordable housing being put on the downtown stretch, such as, as Daniel said, in the Bank of America space. I think that that's the most obvious place for it, because it has access to the transit as well, the, the ferries, the, the bus. But we do have space for parking, so that's not an issue in that space. I'm cautious about it, because, and, and I know, we now know the next question's about SB 50. I'm cautious, because Tiburon, I don't believe, should be a high-density town. I don't think that's why we live here. I don't think that, that is, I don't think that meshes well with the way that we want our town to appear and the way that we, the way that we enjoy it today. But I think that we could have some affordable housing. As Daniel said, mixed use is a good idea, if there's retail on the bottom floor and some affordable apartments above it. I think that that is a, a double win, so to speak, because we've got more people who are also patronizing the retail, because they're right there, they just can walk. I, I think that it's a good idea, I think that we could get some more diversity in town, and it would be helpful for town.
Okay. Jack?
So, first of all, with respect to the policy, I do think there should be a high hurdle for converting multifamily housing into single-family. I don't know that this necessarily has to be a policy against it, but there should be a high hurdle to achieve it. With respect to affordable housing, that's a, a difficult question. I definitely support making housing more affordable, and having more housing, and provide, and exploring workforce housing, but the legal interpretation of affordable housing is such that you have to put below-market-rate housing, and I think that would just be really hard for us. For example, if you did develop the Bank of America building, which I think is a great idea, I mean, I think it's zoned for maybe 21 units maximum, and, you know, I think with state regulations, you'd have to put in two that are below-market rate. The developers usually end up just paying in lieu of fee, and so, you know, do I care that there's two or zero below-market-rate housing? I'm not really sure, but I would love to work on workforce housing, and I would love to work on getting a little more housing here, which would help both with downtown vibrancy and housing prices. I think the mixed-use thing is great. I think thinking a little bigger, best place, I hope nobody hears from Strawberry, but the best place for workforce housing would be at the Seminary, which is a perfect location for it, and it's really frankly was, within the use permit. But downtown would just be very difficult, as everyone said.
I'm trying to decide whether you've already answered the SB 50 question or not. We could have a quick answer, if you want, and we would start with Kathleen, and you already addressed it somewhat.
Could you reread the question, so I make sure I answer it?
Are you in favor of or opposed to the changes that Assemblymember Scott Weiner almost got through in SB 50, which would take away local control over zoning to clear the way for higher-density housing?
Yes, I'm definitely opposed to that. I think that forcing this blanket rule on all of California is a terrible idea. Neighborhoods develop and emerge in the ways that they do, because the people who live there are expressing what they want it to look like, and you can't take away that voice from the constituents who live in the neighborhood. So, for example, we had to, on the Planning Commission, we had to pass the ADU ordinance so that people can convert garages in Tiburon to other, you know, other spaces, living spaces. I also disagree with that, because when you try to force these rules on diverse communities, you miss what's special about the community. I think that, and, and it takes away our voice, and, and so that specific ordinance that we passed takes away the voice of the townspeople, because it takes that approval of that unit and gives it to the town staff. It takes away that extra step of the townspeople being able to come and tell us on the Planning Commission or on the Town Council, "We don't think this is a good idea because of this," or "We do think this is a good idea because of this." It's never a good idea to take away the voice of the voters, and I, that's the main reason I disagree, but also for the other reasons I mentioned. I don't think Tiburon is a good place for high-density housing.
Jack?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to be disingenuous about this, because, you know, what I'm inclined to say is, I generally support any measure that increases high-density housing in appropriate areas, but we're not really appropriate for that. And I know that sounds very nimbyish, but nonetheless, I think it's true. I mean, we're just not well-suited for it. It would be a stretch to consider us a major commuter thoroughfare, or hub, or destination, or whatever would have qualified under the, the original SB 50. So, I think it was good that that, that didn't pass for us and for the state. It was just simply too broad and took away too much local control. The amended version, that I believe Mike McGuire also sponsored, has also seemed to have gone, didn't, didn't achieve the, the needed votes. But, you know, Governor Newsom is making more housing, and more housing stock at priority, so something is certainly going to come. And I do hope that it does not take away too much of our ability to control our own zoning. You know, and I think the, the appropriate compromise is making sure that people are incentivized to build more, but without completely removing all of the controls, with respect to zoning.
Okay. Daniel?
Yeah, exactly. In terms of the SB 50, I mean, I, I also agree the fact that it's, it's just not appropriate, really, for the town of Tiburon, and I think it would change the character if something, if something like SB 50 would have passed under, for sizes of towns of Tiburon, but unfortunately, towns of Tiburon size have been exempt, and now it's actually stuck in the legislation. It, it's also, there's an extreme case, the fact that even when you have a bus stop along Tiburon Boulevard, based on SB 50, you could actually build high-density half a mile from that, you know, bus stop. So, that basically covers most of Tiburon. And I think that most of us live here because we want to be much more like the village community and not play, and not, you know, Mountain View. So, the, the high-density, the high-density, I think, for now, is, is not going to hopefully impact Tiburon. I do agree with, you know, Kathleen and her comments on the ADU units that we, we've, we dealt with the Planning Commission. You know, this is something that was somewhat enforced by, by the state to approve, but it could change some characters of neighborhoods, now that, you know, we can't, there's no real process here of actually not approving an ADU, even if it doesn't fit the neighborhood.
Okay. We have maybe two questions on one card here, but I'll, we'll see. This is about legalizing marijuana. Seventy percent of Marin voters backed the legalization of recreation marijuana, but Tiburon has banned dispensaries and recreational deliveries, which Belvedore, Belvedere allows. Do you think your future colleagues on the City Council represent the will of the people to decriminalize marijuana, and would you have agreed with them? And, and we start with Jack.
Okay, so no shame, but just, who are the 70% of the people who use marijuana? I want to know. No, okay.
Show of hands?
Exactly. So, you know, I think this is just inexorable march of society that we're moving towards this. I, I do think that, that moderate home growth and delivery is going to be a thing of the future, and I, and again, like, to the point of the question, I think it's difficult to continually place restrictions on something that 70% of the people support, right? That's just a, that's a big number to sort of act against. But I do think that a slow, measured response and sort of the proverbial dragging of feet will serve us well in the long term. I, I think it is good not to be the leader in the field at being the most aggressive and most permissive. I think it's good to see what happens in the other towns that have more permissive legislation, and, and make sure there are no negative societal impacts, because, you know, that's something you don't want to have come up and bite you, and that would be difficult to turn the boat around on. So, I think that the approach that they're taking, measured, is exactly the right thing to do.
Daniel?
So, I also echo Ryan as well, Jack as well. I do think that, that my biggest concern is, is actually the impact that could have actually on our, on our kids, and whether it'll have any impact on crime. Now, maybe it won't. You know, Belvedere approved it, Tiburon did not. It's the law of the land in California now, that it's actually legal, but I do think that it doesn't, you know, it doesn't fit, I think, the current, you know, character of how the Town Council views the town currently. That might change. I do think that the, the data out there, I think, is, is way too soon to really, to really see what impact it could have on towns approving dispensaries or approving delivery of marijuana. We should wait and see two, three years. I don't really see why, if there's a rush here. I don't really see that this is a priority necessarily, that the town needs to lose sleep on. So, therefore, if this takes a lot longer, I'm perfectly fine with that. If it never happens, I'm perfectly fine with that as well.
Kathleen?
I echo a lot of the thoughts of Jack and Daniel. I do not, do not support having a dispensary in Tiburon. As Daniel stated, I don't think it fits the character of the town, and not having a dispensary here won't prevent persons who need it to, to get it. I don't know if you've seen the billboards that I've seen on the freeway, there are fairly humorous billboards about, "Oh, there's delivery now for medical marijuana." So, I don't think it's going to be a problem. The persons who need it for medical, you know, ailments can get it. It's not going to be something that we're preventing persons from, from, from obtaining. And I'm also extremely concerned about the studies that are coming out in recent past about the damage that marijuana does to children and even young adults on their developing brains. It's been, I keep seeing more and more studies about it, and I think people are more aware of it now, now that it's become legalized, and I think that a slow, measured approach is absolutely appropriate, because I think that it's been rushed through, and we haven't thought it out very well, and I wouldn't be surprised if more restrictions become, more, there are more restrictions written against marijuana use recreationally in the future. So, I think measured is absolutely the way to go on that issue.
Okay.
Here's a question on governance. Aside from a council member or two, Tiburon once had a tradition in which council members served no more than two terms, creating the room for new ideas and increased engagement. Would you pledge to set down, step down after two full terms? And that goes to Daniel first.
Interesting question. So, I do think that, you know, there's a benefit of having people with experience on Town Council that have been, you know, multiple terms, and there's complex issues that the town deals with. So, I absolutely see the benefit of that. And I also see the benefit of actually having a turnover and getting new people that are interested in volunteering to the community and bringing their perspectives, you know, like the three of us. And, and I think that has to be done in a healthy, in a healthy matter. I, I don't really, I'll be honest, I don't really have a strong opinion on the, on the, on the, on the two-term. If it, if it was presented to me that this is kind of the new, the new law of the town, I would absolutely accept it. I have, I have no problem with that. But I do think that there needs to be that, that, that balance, because when you have a Town Council that everybody is there on the first term, you know, there's no history of really the knowledge of how to work with town government, how to pass, you know, rules, how to deal with complex issues in the town. So, I think that that needs to be some sort of a balance.
Okay. Kathleen?
I think that term limits in general are a good idea, because it's good to bring in new persons who have new ideas. I mean, in Tiburon, you can see that we've had this lag in commercial activity, and it hasn't just been for two years, it's been for 10 years plus, maybe 15 years. I think there needs to be new ideas, new people, new personalities, and that can have a fresh perspective, a, a different dialogue, and I would support having the term limits. The only caveat I would have about that is, we're lucky right now, you have three, I think, very qualified candidates for Town Council. Sometimes there's not a lot of selection, and I think that there should be an escape clause, so to speak, so that when there isn't a good candidate presenting themselves, then maybe it's possible, there could be a vote on it, maybe with the voters, that someone could stay past the two-term limits, because we definitely want effective, good representation in Tiburon. And that could be a problem. We're all very busy, this is a very successful town, and you don't always have great candidates that I think that you have tonight.
Okay. Jack?
Yeah, so to directly answer the question, and with all due respect to Councilmember Fredericks, I would definitely support and pledge to not serve more than two full terms if I were elected. I think it's very healthy for the community to have the turnover. I think that one of the coolest things about this town is that you cannot walk the length of the town without running into three or four ex-mayors. So, the idea that, like, institutional knowledge would be lost just doesn't really make sense, because everyone is so helpful and so accommodating about passing down the expertise that they've developed, that it's really, quote-unquote, "easy" to sort of step into a, a new role and still avail yourself of the institutional expertise that people around here have. So, I think it's a really healthy thing, and I say thank you to the Council for electing to have an open election this time, because I think it's great that all three of us are here, I think it's great for you, I think it's great for us, and it's great for the town, that people are incentivized to participate. And you definitely don't want people to get in the, the mindset of that, that they don't have to participate. I think you want to incentivize it, you want to make people and residents and citizens, to the extent you can, want to participate in governing the town, because that was, that's what makes the community fabric so great around here.
Okay. We've had 12 questions, and I'm feeling it's time to, to move on, to, to the closing statements, but first, I, I have some more information. March 3rd is Election Day. Vote-by-mail ballots were mailed yesterday, February 3rd. Returned ballots must be postmarked no later than March 3rd, and received at the election office no later than March 6th. Please note that Marin County plays the, pays the postage for all returned ballots. If you want a vote-by-mail ballot, you must request one by February 25th. This election is a presidential primary, which means you can only vote for the party preference you disclosed when you registered. If you did not indicate a party preference, you'll not be able to vote on March 3rd for presidential. The deadline to re-register with a party preference is February 18th. Early voting is now open at the election office at the Civic Center. You can vote there in person, Room 128, 21. Look for the League's Easy Voter Guide on the table in the back, or you can find it on our website at www.marinlrv.org. And now the candidates will make closing statements of two minutes each, and we'll go in reverse order, starting with Jack Ryan.
So, first of all, thank you, League of Marin Voters and The Ark for hosting this, as I said earlier. I mean, I'm really appreciative to be able to participate. Thanks to my fellow candidates for running and being here, and mostly thank you to the audience for asking questions and being engaged and wanting to participate. I think it's a really healthy sign for the town. I feel like I'm an excellent candidate, both in terms of experience and approach, and I hope you vote for me. Thanks.
Okay, Kathleen?
Yes, thank you for everyone who organized this, and thank you for coming out, and we're all missing the scintillating State of the Union address right now, so I thank you for, for going, watching that, and coming out tonight. I think the reason I'm an excellent candidate is my, my background in litigation, and it might sound counterintuitive at first, because people assume that litigators are digging their heels in and don't want to compromise and always in a fight. And that's not what good litigators do. The best litigators listen to both sides. The best litigators listen to both sides, understand the priorities and the needs of both sides, and then try to find a solution that both sides can walk away happy. And that is absolutely one-to-one, transferable to what I do on the planning commission and what I will do on the town council. There needs to be more dialogues, there needs to be more understanding. I want, I love hearing from the townspeople. I think that everyone has great ideas and these ideas need to be heard and they need to be put into action. And I just love doing this, so I hope that you'll vote for me on March 3rd.
Daniel Lamir?
Great, thank you. Thank you for coming, for coming here tonight as well. I think we're fortunate that we do live in this wonderful community here in Tiburon, and it is being well-managed today by the current town manager and town council. I think there's always things we can improve on. You know, we can improve on revitalizing downtown by working with the developers and the community. I think we can improve on, you know, preserving the open space, creating trails and bike lanes and parks. I think we can improve on emergency preparedness as well to work closely with neighborhoods and creating block liaisons. And overall, we can always improve on strengthening our community. I do think that town is in good shape financially, and I do think that, you know, we need to be, continue to promote that as well. I do believe that in terms of my qualities here and in bringing to the table, coming from experience with town government, from the neighborhood, as being the president of the Neighborhood Association and the community, I think, you know, positions me well to be successful, you know, in, in a town council role and taking a leadership position as well. I wanted to thank, you know, my family that came here tonight, and I'll be honored to continue serving the town in the future, and I hope you'll vote on March 3rd. Thank you.
All right. I want to thank Community Media Center of Marin for recording this event. It will be broadcast on Channel 30 and posted on YouTube. The YouTube link, along with the rebroadcast days and times, will be available at the League of Women Voters website. Thank you to the ARC for making this event possible and especially Deidre McCrone for organizing tonight's forum. Thanks to the candidates for participating, to Nancy Weber for timekeeping, and Nancy Bell for question sorting, and to you for joining us tonight, and most importantly, for voting. Bye-bye.
Thank you.